...the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the meeting to order and thank everyone for being here. Here's Counsel London.
Present.
Counsel Spidey.
Present.
Counsel Wilson.
Present.
Counsel Bearden.
I'm down here.
Okay, and myself, present. And at this point, I would like to introduce a motion to the floor to replace me as president of the council with David Spidey.
I'll take the chair.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on that issue?
Sure, we got a discussion, of course.
Cool, let's have it.
When did this come up?
When did this come up? It was my decision, sir, because I've only got two meetings left, and I felt like the remainder, we've got one person on the council who's never served in this position, so it would give him an opportunity, even if it's two, because y'all will still have your options when the new council meets, to change that position. So you think this is it? That's me. That's why I put it on the floor. Yes, sir. Okay. All right. I'm glad y'all talked about it before. That's all I want to say. Go ahead. You got a second. Okay. We got a second, okay? And I'd like to call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Any votes?
No.
Two ayes, okay. Motion carries. Does that, or Counsel Spidey?
And let's just make something very clear. Now, sir, when I talk about trying to serve as president, let's get that straight. But one thing that I do not, and I cannot go along with, and that's transparency, okay? I want to get that straight now. But we have a very good relationship, but transparency...
And we deal with right and wrong. Wrong is wrong, and right is right. And I think, and I think, let me finish.
I still have a force of, I'm in control. I just want to say, of my decisions, of other y'ells', and again, I will have the chance when you start your official meetings, to make a change.
Mr. President, can I finish?
Feel like it's appropriate. Not completely black people.
Can I finish? Thank you. You, as the president of this council, you choose not to have a conversation with the other two councils?
I can't, I won't.
You have conversations with those too?
I did not.
Oh, I disagree.
I did not.
I totally disagree.
I did.
You had a conversation with somebody. You had a conversation with somebody to come up on this meeting, this meeting, this meeting, and make this decision tonight. And when this meeting was about the CDA, it wasn't about this. So you just threw a monkey wrench in the whole, whole deal tonight, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, sir. I meant, well, I can't. Counsel Spidey, would you like to take a seat up here, please, and read your position? I'd like to go out where I came in as the regular councilman. Thank you.
There are disappointments, Spidey. There are disappointments. I guess we'll put that on record.
Again, I'm not, I don't want to do, I would like to see if someone will make a motion for the approval of the current bills. How many approve bills? Current bills in the amount of $234,848.15.
Aye.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. All right, time for, do we have any professional or consultants to give a report tonight? Okay. Mayor's not with us tonight. Mayor Lett James, I'd give you an opportunity if you would like to make an announcement of some sort. You're good. All right, thank you. All right, do we have any department heads? I do not see any department heads to give a report. Moving on to the council members for reports. Steve, you're on A, so let's go. What do you have for us tonight?
Okay, just real quickly, you see in front of you all of the candidates that were sent forward by the CDA. If we could please recognize their astute chair, Mr. Pugh, when it comes time, he's the kind of fellow sign of the process that they went through to get to this point. And I believe all of y'all have received the list from the CDA indicating their choices and how they ranked everything that we can use as guidelines, and you have the resumes to review.
Their recommendations.
And you don't have to pay their recommendations.
Yes, sir.
And they were ranked in order. And the other thing is, if I understood after all the back and forth, the census is still on the board till the end of the month, please encourage people to participate. Alabama is now the worst state in the whole entire union, and basically, as far as responding, it will cost us money at some point if we don't respond, because it's very important to get that number up in order to get federal reimbursement and support. With that being said, that's all I have for the night.
Thanks, sir. Terry?
I want to, did you know what speech they have about the census? The gas tax is distributed throughout the state according to the census of each city. And people here don't think enough about, you know, filling out that census form, if roads are not going to get paved. That's what those funds from the government, from the gas tax come from, and they're distributed according to the population of each city and each county. And it's very important that we get those, you know, those gas tax funds, because you're spending the money at the gas station, and none of that money comes directly back to the city. It all goes to the state and is all distributed equally. No matter what, no matter where you buy your gas, that tax goes straight to the state and is distributed according to the population. And if we don't get to, if you don't get counted, then that's one more, better gas tax we don't get, along with the federal funds that Steve mentioned. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. John?
No, no comment.
Myself, no comments, except for the fact that Irondale Public Library, as of 10:05, they're open to the public for limited browsing, Monday through Thursday, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They're still moving forward with curbside pickup. And then Bobby Joe?
Yes, first of all, I want to tell everyone good evening, and second, just want to make a quick announcement. I want to thank all of the citizens that came out this past weekend, on October 3rd. I had a school supply giveaway drive-by, and we also had free ice cream for the kids. Well, adults too. I think adults ate more ice cream than kids, actually. But I just want to thank everyone for coming out and getting supplies for the kids. It turned out great. We still have some supplies that's left over, so if you know any kids that's in need, or any families that's in need as far as school supplies for their kids, just tell them, send me an email, or they can shoot me a text, or even call me. Leave a message, so I can get them the supplies they need. Oh, yeah, and God is in control. That's all I have.
All right, and regarding reports and boards from non-council committees, David, do you want to take an opportunity?
Sir, shall I go ahead and talk about the process of the recommendation?
You gave me the floor.
Yep. Well, first of all, I want to thank each of the candidates. We had five very good candidates, each of whom expressed a desire to serve as purely volunteer position, so they're to be commended for their voluntarism in the first place. They were all competent, they all had things to commend them as potential members. It was a very tough job for us. Let me just make sure, like, I know we've got Aaron Sims here, Ellen Ortes, Paul Saucier, Mark Hune, and Douglas Jones. So we've got the five all here tonight. Since we've had to make a decision, and that's literally, before I say this, for those of you who are not chosen tonight by the city, or, excuse me, by the city council, there are other opportunities to serve, and I would continue, I would urge you to continue to volunteer. We have the DRA, we have the IDB, we have other opportunities to serve. But for the two open seats, our top recommendation would go to Paul Saucier to continue in the seat that he's currently occupying, determined, and Ms. Ellen Ortes. Secondarily, we'd look at Aaron Sims and Douglas Jones, along with Mr. Hune. And that would be our recommendation, based on what we felt would be the best mix to contribute to the CDA business. But again, I thank each of you for volunteering. It was a tough decision. That would be our recommendation. Question?
I have a question. So, when you say the board made the decision, was it the two that's on the board also made the decision, ranking these?
It was myself, David Rawson, Victor Childers, and Paul Saucier discussing the candidates other than himself. He then recused himself in the meeting, and the three of us continued with the discussion. So, yes.
That's not my question.
And these are good recommendations. The council does not have to advise about them.
That's correct. It's advisory level.
And they did that during the executive session. I attended the first part of when they went into this executive session.
Any final questions for David?
No, I would, we're, the council is the one that has to make the decisions.
By all means, I'm going to ask to hear from the candidates here momentarily.
Can I not finish my question?
Absolutely.
And I would recommend, as a council, to interview these people as well.
Yes, sir. As far as David is concerned, do we have any other questions for David Pugh specifically?
No, good job. Just thank y'all.
Right.
Thank you for what you do.
So we have all five candidates with us tonight, and then I believe Ms. Ellen, do you have a prior commitment, correct? And I think that there was some discussion about you going ahead and coming on up first, so if you would gladly do so. And you have the floor. If you want to just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your background, why you're interested in serving, and then we may have some questions for you.
Hello, can you meet me? My name is Ellen Ortiz. I grew up in Surkey, Arkansas, which is a little bit bigger than I do. I moved to Alabama to attend Sanford University. I was a history major. After attending Sanford, I did a fifth-year program as I started my first year teaching. So I taught history for five years in the Woodlawn community, just every year. After that, I spent some time in the tech industry under David Gray at Daxco. I was a right-wing woman in charge of cultural and business development. And from there, I moved into real estate. So I'm now a residential estate agent, serving the entire Birmingham area, but I love working in Irondale. I have a passion to see Irondale continue to develop. When I was reached out to about this position, I was very excited about it, because I've worked with clients here in Irondale, I'm very excited about the grocery store that we're getting, but also, I think a lot of people see the potential for our precious community. We have a great, we have a great community to live downtown, but we have this excellent, quiet, this quiet neighborhood, and a great community. I've lived in Irondale since 2014. I purchased my first home here at the age of 24, and it's one of the best decisions I ever made. Thoroughly enjoyed this community, thoroughly enjoyed coming into adulthood here. My husband and I live on the old East Road, and we love our neighbors, we love this community. And when this opportunity came up, my husband and I both thought this was a great step for us to take in my volunteer in the community and give it back.
Open the floor for questions.
I have something I'm just going to write around first, but y'all can go ahead.
I have one question. Since you mentioned the grocery store, do you think the CDA has something to do with the grocery store coming to Irondale and why?
I'm under the impression that there was some cooperation there, but I think it was a team effort.
Steve?
So what was your, what was your role, what was your role, Ms. Ortiz, on the CDA this past two years? You had two years?
No, I've never been on the CDA.
This is personal. What was your role? Do you think your role would be?
You know, I'm, I'm bringing some youth, I think, and I have a lot of experience in real estate and as well as growing businesses in the tech industry, but I also have a master's in education. I like, I like to come to a table and see all sides of the room, and I like thinking outside the box. I'm a right-bring and a left-bring pretty equally, so I can typically see both sides of the room. So I like to think I'm the middle ground in any discussion.
John, did you have a follow-up question?
I'm trying to keep you going, just might as well.
No, it's fine. I started to move to Steve, but you started to ask other questions, so I just wanted to make sure that you had your opportunity.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. Bobby Joe?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for coming, first of all. Just two questions. Have you ever served on any committee in Irondale before?
Not in Irondale, no. This would be my first.
This would be your first? Okay. What makes you the best candidate for serving on the CDA here in Irondale? What makes you the best candidate? I've heard you, you know, you're a real estate whatever, but what other qualities you bring to the CDA board?
I'm a woman of action. If there's something to be done, I'm on it. I can't, I can't sit around and sit on my hands, so I'm a woman of action. I do, I do have a heart to serve, and I believe very firmly as American citizens, as Alabama citizens, as Irondale citizens, our job to give back. So I have the desire to do that. As far as qualification, I have a very well-rounded background, so whether it be education, business, real estate, I bring a little bit of all of those to the table.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve?
As I said, I have my, my, I'm a woman of action.
See this one on the down floor? Okay. And then I do not have any questions for you. Bobby Joe actually asked the question I was going to ask of you, so I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And we'll go down the line with the resumes. Douglas Jones, if you'd like to come on? Similar format. You've got the floor. Same setup. If you would like to tell us why you're interested, anything about Irondale that you love, or why you just basically don't serve.
My name is Douglas Jones, third. I moved to the state of Alabama six years ago to, because of the hospital, I needed a heart transplant. So I've had a heart transplant, that's why nobody's seen me over the past six years. But I'm a retired corporate executive. I lived in Irondale all six years. I built this house here. I mean, I chose this location because it's the center of the metro area. I did a lot of research. Irondale can be great, but for some reason, since I've been here, Irondale has been stagnant. Irondale is going to change, and I want to be part of that change, because after this pandemic has over, whether you want it or not, people are going to move south. Companies are going to relocate. This, I can tell you, is going to happen. I like this area, but if Irondale doesn't want to change, people not going to come here. I look at Trustville. When I moved here, what it was and what it is now is dramatically different six years ago. Trustville is booming, Irondale is not. Irondale should be doing what Trustville is doing. Hoover is dying. People are looking for places to move. This is the apex of the city metro area. I 2059, 459. You on all four sides of it. You have the most logistic economic real estate in the metro area, but you're doing nothing with it. Nothing. Over my course of my career, I've been on school boards, arts commission, I've been the head of PTAs, and when I was the head of the PTA, I got seven school buildings. Seven. Lotted that council, did the economic analysis, defended it, and as they told me in Fulton County, this is the first time we ever had a 7-0 vote in the history of Fulton County in advance of getting something done. I don't come to play. I'm all about action. I've testified at the Congress, I've dealt with states, I helped open out a continental self oil and gas drilling in this state. I helped set up the royalty basis. I've done a lot in my career. I can help. I can help Irondale get to where it needs to be. But if Irondale don't want people on this commission that can help them, that's Irondale's fault. You can continue where you are, or you can look to move forward. It's time to move forward in this state. Alabama, irregardless of what you think, is the center of the southeast, and everybody recognizes, along with Irondale. You've got to get with the program. And the program don't come irregardless whether you want it or not. I like, like I said, eight miles from downtown, six miles from Trustville. There are companies looking to move here. I talk to companies all the time, even though I'm retired. They called me, they said, why don't you move there? I said, one, it's a good economic spot. Two, it's a great place to live, it's cheap, they have adequate resources, the airport is right here, but they got one problem. For some reason, they refuse to accept change. Change, like I said, is constant. Even you start a plan in Miami, I have a degree in urban planning, I've done engineering, I've dealt with legal and environmental, land, real estate, commercial. I built power plants, I've dealt with city councils, I've dealt with galleries, I've dealt with corporate assets, I've dealt with presidents of corporations. I've done things a lot of people have never done in their lifetime. But that's not why I choose to do this as a volunteer. I choose to serve because if you've got the experience, put it on the table. Help your community get to where your community needs to be. Every community I've lived in, I've made a change, made a difference. I didn't just sit there. There's sickness sidelined me. I'm back in the game now. You can choose whether you want to be on the team. That's your choice. And then I can choose whether I want to stay here. That's the choice I have. See, people that are high in the mood, they not going to stay in a static environment. They will move. And that's the thing Irondale going to face when other suburban areas start changing. Will your young, highly mobile population stay here? Will you bring the jobs that are necessary for them to stay here? Will the companies look at your area as a place of opportunity?
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
I have one question, though.
Absolutely.
You're up. Pretty good. I'll let you go first. This time. This time, go first.
This is, this is, as far as I'm concerned, so Bobby Joe, if you want to go ahead and go, by all means.
Okay. You get me in the floor?
Yes, sir. No question.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Jones. I appreciate you taking the time here. I'm pretty much the same, and I'm on the panel, ask the same questions. I know you have answered probably my second question, but I'm going to ask you, have you served on any other committee here in Irondale? I know you've been here for six years.
No.
Okay. All right. And what makes you the best candidate besides you serving on school boards in Atlanta, which is a very large area, having a corporate background? You said something about corporate background. Where did you, where did you retire from previously?
I retired from Overcoast Power, which is the largest property on generation and transmission in America.
Oh, boy.
I worked, I worked for the Department of Interior. I worked for them for 10 years. I completed two congressional projects for the Department of Interior. I saved the city of Gaston. The city of Gaston was getting ready to lose 53,000 acres because they didn't, because the state sold them railroad land from the federal government, which was illegal. And they was getting ready to put 53,000 acres and put all those people, half of their downtown, the government getting ready to take all of that property back. I walked in at the age of 23, did all legal research, all demand research, put together all the package, presented it to Congress to give those people a patent where the land was transferred to them for free. I've done a lot of things that I really don't talk about, because people get intimidated and don't want you on the side, because they want to stay where they are, where what they are. If I look at where Irondale is today, whatever that Commercial Development Commission they're doing, it's not a whole lot. You lost Sam. You lost that Sam wholesale. That shouldn't happen. A lot of things around here are moving out of Irondale, they going other places. I got a background that can help.
Okay. So that's, that makes you the best candidate, then? I guess that answers my question.
Do you have a follow-up question?
No.
John, I wanted you to start with that question.
Yeah, I just, I just, just looking at the resume, I see Georgia, North Carolina, Florida, Utah, and already, and all these places that you work in, you look, and so you seem like you mean you've got a long arm of reaching different people around the country.
Yes. I was, I was the first African-American to go through the Department of Interior lands and mental school. I met hundred requirements. They select 100 people every day to put them through this school. I went through that graduate, not one in my class. And they came and said, for somebody to be on the job six months, while we got a minimum requirement of five years, to do what you did is intelligent. And after that, I didn't, they told me you never had to apply for a job, and I did. Moving around was because, people called me because I saw a thing. I get things done. I come to the table, I present the information, I defend the information. I dealt with Norton Stanley, Goldman Sachs. That's what I mean. I've dealt with all the major banks negotiating loans. I did, I worked on the U.S. Canadian Treaty for water storage. I worked on fifty billion-dollar deals that I was overseeing. I played a big boy game. I can help. I can help recruit. I can help go out and present a very good economic, social, familial picture to corporations that are looking to relocate. And trust me, it's going to be a shift in America.
Do you have a follow-up question, John? Okay. Steve?
Okay.
And I do not have a question for you either, sir.
Okay.
Sorry. I'm not used to the, the down, yeah, no, no.
Yeah, well, y'all put me down here.
Yeah, I know.
That's it.
All right. So you do not have any questions, Terry?
No.
All right, perfect. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Aaron, would you like to come up?
I'm the following. I'm impressed with the resume. Hi, thanks most y'all, anyway. My name's Aaron Simmons. I did, I grew up in Irondale, served in the Marine Corps back in Irondale in spring of 2008, which I then started, my wife, my, in council meetings, see the ball, and stuff. Don't care how things work, I guess, but you know, as much as we could. I served previously on the CDA, probably a couple of years, maybe a little bit more, with a lot of opportunity to do it again. I think they've done a, we've seen a lot of changes in the last few years. You know, there's been some growth, and I'd like to help continue that growth as a, as a member again. I am a real estate broker here in Birmingham. Been doing that for, just right in two years, been an agent since 2012. I jacked basically compliance out of my business as far as selling, buying. I'm also in charge of making sure, all of my agents, I've got 315 agents, maybe 316, I think we signed some today, are complying with Alabama State Real Estate law, local legislation rules, NAR, National Association of Realtors, code of ethics, and basically good contracts. code of ethics, and, you know, basically, uh, good contracts, right way. A lot of putting out fires in my position. Uh, when agents are getting along, things going smooth, it's all good. When they're approaching between fire and seller, I get to hear about it. And, uh, trying to solve those problems, get basically, with the consumer launch, it is to buy the house or sell the house, you know, that's all that go. Sometimes agents kind of get in their way of that when they, uh, get emotional, but, uh, negotiating, uh, pretty strong negotiator. I love negotiating, actually. Everything I do is negotiating from home to six kids to working with a bunch of agents and negotiating with a vacant seller. Uh, if anybody's got kids, y'all are good negotiators. If they're young, you've got more practice than, than others. Um, I think Irondale's got a ton of potential. Um, I think we don't even know the limit. We're going to be, it's probably more than we can even expect or think about. Uh, again, everything going the last few years, uh, after we obviously, you know, brought the plans to get hit there, but, um, there's a lot out there. I think we've got a ton of room for growth and a lot to help figure out where, you know, what direction we're going and be, be part of it again.
I've been starting on John's end. John, do you have a question for Aaron?
Uh, yes, yes. What, what do you think, I'm going to use my, what do you think will make you the best candidate? I know you've served on the CDA a couple of years. What would you think you'd be the best candidate?
Oliver City. I, uh, I've been a big proponent of the city since I've been back. Um, you know, I think, uh, I want to say the council and the CDA work together. Um, I think that, you know, local businesses that we've already got, I think are important. I want to make sure, you know, we, we want to retain those. We also want to bring in new businesses and, you know, help them grow in floors as well. Uh, I mean, I think growing the tax base is probably the most important thing for the cities. Just because, you know, all the citizens for years, you know, we want, we want, we want. Well, that's how they get, so, you know, if the CDA is, I guess, uh, tip the spear almost as far as commercial development, bringing in those businesses that are hopefully going to provide the tax base, it'll provide the citizens ultimately all the cool fancy things they want. Um, and, uh, yeah, I'm, I'll, that's what, yeah, I don't know. That's what I want. Uh, I want to be a part. I want to, you know, think outside the box, see, see what we can make happen and kind of think around.
Thank you.
Steve? Just one, no, uh, Joe?
Yes, um, that was John's question, but I still have two questions. Other than serving on the CDA, what other committee have you served on here in the city of Irondale?
I was a member of the advisory council to the Aga on the Move initiative, uh, when that was in existence. Um, so that's it.
What is one thing you would implement as a new member of the CDA, if chosen, that is not being done already that you think needs to be done in the city of Irondale?
I'd like to, uh, see some sort of initiative that, uh, helps Irondale residents start to, to, some sort of, I don't know, but, for lack of a better term, incubator of some sort, um, something, I mean, it, it, it may be just connect them to resources, you know, connect them with SBA, uh, maybe mentorship, something like that, but, I mean, we've got a ton of great residents.
You said SBA, what was that other word?
Small business initiative.
Yeah, I know what SBA is. Well, you can use another term. SBA is something else, you said.
Oh, it's like mentorships. Maybe connect them with, uh, people in our area who can mentor a small business, you know, maybe someone who's got insight in whatever area they're looking at. I just think we've got a lot of great citizens, great ideas, uh. Uh, the pandemic has shifted a bunch of stuff, where everyone's talking, you know, working at home. I'm sure there's people out there with great ideas that will have suits with that, you know, restaurants are having to pivot, uh, a ton of businesses are having to pivot what they're doing. And I'd love to see, you know, us create business from within our community.
Thank you.
Terry?
I'm good.
Uh, question for you, Aaron. Uh, when you, when you worked on CDA prior and everything, uh, are there any particular accomplishments that you were part of and what, um, what position did you play in those accomplishments?
Um, I believe we had a business of the month program. I, I didn't remember, I think it started before I got on the CDA. Uh, I think it was, it was nice going out and recognizing businesses. I, I still go out into some of the restaurants and stuff, or business, you'll see the whole fan display there. You know, just getting to know more about that individual business owner in that process, you know, even more to meet someone else. And I discovered this, I didn't know here, have to look here, so. I was, you know, something like that. Um, I enjoy that, you know, meeting people, um, going out and meeting people in the community that, again, were working here, on the business here. Um, I think we're all good. It's a blur.
Is it, was it what, two years?
I want to say twenty...
I know it was a finishing up of someone else's term that you were...
Yeah, I think it was, it was probably early, somewhere in the mid twenty sixteen through late seventeen or early.
Yeah, yeah, it was almost two years.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, we went to a couple of conferences where we learned a lot, um, and were trying to come back and learn some that we picked up from, uh, like, from that, just meeting, again, talking to people in different, uh, different, some cities have CDA, some just have economic development, other, I guess, jobs of some sort. And just, you know, seeing what other people were doing around the stage, trying to see if we can implement some of that stuff here. I love, you know, continuing that, because if it's working somewhere else, it should be able to work here.
Appreciate it.
That's all I have. That was your time, Aaron.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Terry, you said you did not have any questions for him?
No.
Okay.
And, and I apologize. I did say thank you for coming as well. I appreciate you taking the time.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry I missed your ice cream on Saturday.
That's all right.
Um, next, we have Paul. He would come up and introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about you, and, uh, similar format as the previous.
Hi there. Um, I finished up a term also, so I've been on the CDA for the past year. Um, as you know, we've got a few things starting to pop. And, uh, I would love to be part of the irons that are in the fire. Um, we live right off of Branch Mill Road, and I knew that we were expecting a lot of stuff to be happening on Branch Mill Road here shortly, but, um, I was driving, uh, this morning down in Leeds, and they're building that bucket with, what, sixty, seventy gas pumps, whatever it is, I mean, it's a ton of them. And, you know, I got to thinking, like Mr. Joel was saying, we've got stuff popping all around us. And sometimes it feels like other cities start to get the economic development first. And when it all starts to roll good and starts to come our way, then it feels like it slows down. And then all of a sudden, things crash and we didn't get out of harm's. But we know that we are on the verge of a few things right now that are in the works. And, uh, I've been part of it this past year. I'd love to be part of it again. Um, as far as my history, we started our company in Cobb Heights. We watched Cobb Heights go from a little blue collar town, and we watched it pop. Um, we raised our kids through high school in Alabaster. We watched Alabaster flip from a little town and we watched it pop. Irondale has what I call the landscaper effect. And that is where it's the cheapest property that's most convenient to where the money is. And, uh, right now, if you go down the street and start counting landscapers, they're all places. Our electrical supply building that's there on Branch Mill Road is here for a reason. I mean, what else do we need as far as, um, uh, commercial entities? I feel like there's some other suppliers that could be here. Um, we don't have a nursery, right? I'm in, I'm in the landscape field. We have, uh, almost four hundred customers in Mountain Brook. Um, I feel like we, we, we've got nurseries down on one nineteen. We got nurseries. Um, then we have to drive thirty, forty-five minutes to them. But we have a ton of landscapers. You drive down Derby Parkway, Alton Road, we got a ton of them. Um, the biggest landscape company in all of, uh, Alabama has a branch on Alton Road, but we don't, we don't service it. Uh, you go to Trussville to, uh, supply houses, and you go out down Highway twenty-eight to supply houses. But it's not just landscapers, right? I mean, we're in a, we're in a spot that is popping. You know, Mr. Joel was talking about Trussville. You know, we, we go to Trussville to eat. Um, you know, i- i- if you look at the communities where the ladies are going to take their strollers to take their kids walking, they're, they're going to go walk, uh, here in Irondale. Does anybody know where, if you're a lady, you're going to walk your kids here in Irondale? But have y'all seen them?
A little bit in, in my area around, around the village and the school.
This is a very walkable area, right? Has a lot of potential. But, but it does have a lot of distance, right? You can do a few little blocks and you feel like you run out of space. What, what else do people go take their kids to walk? They, they go to Shapella Hospital, go round and round and round the rubber track, right? I go up there all the time and people are jogging and we jog. Then, and then Church of the Highlands. I mean, it's not even a, a, a public entity, but we're going to Church of the Highlands and people are going to round and round in circles, walking their dogs, and, uh, and walking their kids, and, and kids on bicycles. So my dream for Irondale is where people, the moms bring a stroller out at night when it's seven o'clock and it's in the dust, and they feel like this is a, this is a, a safe, cozy, well-developed city. What's that mean? It, it, it means our downtown areas feel, um, alive and safe. And that's, that's my dream for Irondale.
John?
Well, I'm Mr. Paul Sossier. I, I think our community is already safe. I think our police do, do, yeah, because I live in Holiday Gardens, and I see people walking all the time during the night.
And I think Holiday Gardens is a big sidewalk, right?
I think our old city needs sidewalks. We need to connect them somehow, or we need to connect Old Irondale, Holiday Gardens, and it's all over. You know, so at least, I think we need sidewalks all over here.
You know, we're talking about Cobb Heights?
Right.
When Mountain Brook took over Cobb Heights right off the road, the first thing they did was put a sidewalk on the bus side, a little green in the middle, and they called it Cobb Heights Village.
That's correct. I've been through that a lot, multiple times.
Yep.
Like I said. But the question I have, uh, and you say it doesn't stop popping, and I know you probably can share all those things. What are some of the things the CDA has done the past four years? And I know the grocery store is a big, big deal for you. Do you think you got, you guys were held responsible for that? Uh, and if you were, what way did you get involved to make that happen?
Well, well, you know, I, I've only been on it for a year. Um, I can't speak beyond the year. Uh, but in the year, in the meetings that we've had, we've, uh, we've been meeting with the, the, the company we hired that does a lot of recruitment of people. Um, and I tell you, we've been super fiscally responsible. Um, there hasn't been a penny that has been wasted. As, as, you know, we have a very small, uh, revenue stream, and that money has been, has not been touched. It has been left alone because we have potentially projects that's fixing to pop. And, and we're going to be, you know, the, the, the issue of the Commercial Development Authority is not what it can financially go out and do, but it's the, it's, there's tax advantages of working a project through the Commercial Development Authority. So you say, well, what did you do? Did you take all your money out of your checking account and go spend it? That's not what the Commercial Development Authority does. The Commercial Development Authority plays the role in the middle between the commercial entity and the city. It's a tool of the city in order to help that company, um, uh, with tax-free borrowing is a measure. You know, the, the money that right now goes through from the other things that's been done previously, that doesn't even have to go through the checking account of CDA. It can just go from the commercial entity straight to the bank, and yet the, the, the CDA played a legal role in making sure that money, um, could be borrowed at the most advantage.
You know, and I, I, just like Councilman Wilson, I'm, I'm big on transparency. That's when you're dealing with people of Irondale, you know, it's in this seat. I'm big on transparency. How, what is, what is your, your, your input on being transparent to the council and to people in Irondale?
I'm a pretty simple man. Um, we, we had a baby when we were eighteen years old. Uh, I took night classes, got, you know, started a landscape business from nothing, and, uh, worked hard, and, uh, kept it for, now we're finishing twenty-nine years. So you look at my resume, there's one job, right? Uh, how do you keep three hundred and seventy Mountain Brook people happy? You, you, you show up all the time, and you do it over and over and over and over again for, for twenty-nine years. So I ain't no complicated, you know, uh, it, we, we find good people. We, 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 we hold their feet to the fire to show up for work, you know? It, what's the biggest challenge in life is sometimes building an organization on humanity.
Right.
Um, you know, it, it, I'd rather run a machine than try to figure out how to keep a group of people together. But that, that, that's where our skillset is.
What, what was your role the past year on the CDA?
Um, I didn't have a title like a, like a treasurer or secretary.
So what did you, what did you bring? Were you the front guard, the shooting guard, the small forward? Were you a rebounder? Were you an assist person? What was your role as, as a CDA, especially?
I feel like I'm a driller, right? So when I drive down seventy-eight and I see the old, uh, furniture store that, uh, that has been a fitness center, and I see the Regent Bank beside it, and I see the little buildings behind it that's up for sale? I mean, I don't know how much y'all think about it, but how often do you get commercial properties, three of them for sale at the, at the same exact time, that can all be combined into one unit? And, you know, everything gets chopped up. The whole time you're in real estate, it all gets chopped up. How many times can you put things back together and make it, make it something good? You know, we're sitting on, we're sitting on that right now in the heart of our city, and, and I think we're missing it.
One more question. I'm not going to hold you long. Oh, thank you again for coming tonight. Uh, got a new mayor coming here. I'm going to just put this out there. And I know you've been working with a last mayor for the past year and three years, whatever, progressive. How are you going to be able to work with our new administration, and what are you going to do to make sure that happens?
Oh, I, I'm excited. I, 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 I looked at your plan on the, on, on the, the Grant Mill Station. Man, Grant Mill Station's needed work for a long time. Uh, you know, it's a debate of whether or not you want to put the city there or you've got other ideas for it, but I've always thought that big empty parking lot hanging out over the middle of the hill was a missed opportunity. I mean, we, we got our only city park tucked in around behind there, and we got all these big, very big parking lots up against Grant Mill Road. You know, you think about the word mama takes her kids. Well, you think, won't she, won't she take her kids up there to the park? But it's not visible. It's not where somebody, you know, the, we got many storages sitting on the side of, uh, of Highway seventy-eight that are right by a river that if, if it was, if you were sitting down with a scrap sheet of paper before things got built, you would have put a park right there, run along the banks of the river. So I, I, I think the plan is to revitalize that area is great, and at the same time, I'm a Dave Ramsey fan. I'm a, I'm a save the money, and when it's all in the bank, then you spend it. So I'm real hesitant to say I love the idea of spending a lot of money. But I think that with our company, just to be straight honest, we have all of our trucks running, and we don't have any truck payments. We don't use credit cards. Everything we do with our business is to take a debit card, and it comes straight out of the checking account, and we keep cash reserves. How you stay profitable in a landscape business? You run tight. And of this city, uh, if we borrow too much money, while the interest rates are low, we might find ourselves paying them back when the interest rates are high. And so I am cautious in that. But otherwise, I can't wait for some light coming into that, that Grant Mill Station.
So, so do you bring kind of a financial piece to the city of, with that thought process, which is Dave Ramsey thought process?
Uh, I, I, I mean, I guess, I'm very disciplined, right?
Right.
It's, it's, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a spin threat, uh, uh, financial idea. Like I, I see, I see money, and I work there, I make it grow, not shrink.
I'm done. I'm done. We can go on and on.
Yeah, sorry. Hey, you're, you've been in charge of parks, right?
Yeah, right now.
Like, like, my heart's with you on this.
I know.
Yeah. I, 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 I have, I'm a runner. I have ran up and down Highway seventy-eight. I ran around the, uh, the, the loop of Route two fifty-nine. I ran circles. I've got a, a one-mile loop for Church of the Highlands. I ran right through here and, and ran past somebody who was high out in the middle of the street and ran down the train tracks. Uh, I think we may, uh, I think we have need, uh, to take advantage of the opportunity that's pressuring Irondale to, to park.
So, so I guess, I was, I was done, but I'm going to ask you this question since you brought it up. So, uh, what could be your role as a CDA person or CDA dealer to help with the parks?
The problem is that doesn't fit its role, right? I mean, the CDA, the CDA...
The CDA doesn't do anything. So is there a thought process, force, your input?
I, I think the best businesses do well in banks of... I think the best businesses do well on the banks of a park. Look at Railroad Park. As soon as they built Railroad Park, that whole area exploded, right? I mean, how many restaurants do you pull in when you're just sitting on the side of a highway versus when somebody can stop and spend time in a park? I mean, Rotary Trail, all the way from Good People, all the way from Railroad Park, all the way to fix it and extend it to Abendale, right? It ain't the perfect place to live, but people jog up and down that road all the time because somebody put in a trail and a whole train track.
You're good?
Steve, just checking. Okay. Sure, Terry. Councilor.
You're good?
All right. First of all, thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate you taking the time. You know, and I do have two and a half questions for you because you're on the CDA.
Okay.
So, you know, I'm very big in communication, transparency. You heard me say that earlier. I'm real big on communication, transparency, and integrity, okay? I have not seen you in a year. I have not seen you since you've been serving on the board. I've also not seen one of your counterparts that's here. I've been on the council for fourteen years. I never had a conversation with you. I've never seen you. Actually, I thought you were Mark and he was Paul. So I really had y'all mixed up. And I do remember when y'all came in and we appointed you guys, whatever. But I haven't seen you since then. And I'm big on relationships as well. It doesn't seem like it probably, but I am. But I have not seen you in a year. So I say that to say, if you're chosen tonight, or whatever the case may be, I really would like to sit down and talk to you and just see what your plans are or, you know, you get to know me. Because that's important to me. That's very important. But I haven't seen you in a year since we appointed you to the CDA board. I see Mr. Pugh all the time, but I have not, I have not ever talked to him. So I will go on to ask my question. Have you ever served on another committee here in Irondale other than the CDA?
Talk about here in Irondale?
Yes, sir.
In fact, we just moved here two years ago.
Oh, two years.
We had bought a piece of land ten years ago, or actually now twelve years ago. We held oath to it till our son graduated high school and our alabaster. And then we came here and built a house.
Yes, okay. Glad you moved in. I ask you the same thing. What is one thing, I know you've been on the CDA for a year. What is one thing that, I guess, what role have you played while serving on the CDA? Being in what role have you implemented any new ideas? Or have you made any changes or suggested any changes while you've been on the CDA? That's what I mean by what role have you played since you've been there in a year. Have you done any of those things? Or you tell me what have you come up with?
Sure. You know, we've got a few things in the works, right? And I think you're very aware of what's in work.
I, not quite.
Okay.
Not quite.
Pretty much. There's a few major things, right?
I should be, but I'm not.
Okay. There's a few major things that have been sort of targets. So a CDA meeting consists of coming in with, talking about where the targets have been at and what's moving forward with those targets, arranging some meetings around those targets. And some of the things, meetings I can't attend, right? Sometimes it's me show up and we just sort of say, here's some information that's out here and not everybody can know about it, but here's where we're moving forward. Sometimes it's listening to reporters.
Okay. So basically, the role that you have played, basically, you're just there just to get reports for the years that you've been there. You're just there to get reports or get whatever information that you can. But you haven't implemented or changed anything, correct? Since you've been serving on the board for a year?
Like, for me to change something, right?
Suggest. I guess my word is suggest it, yeah.
I think one role I play in suggestions is that I drive up and down the roads of Irondale a lot. Our office is on Derby Park now and our customers are in Mountain Brook. And I am pretty aware of most, all developments going on as far as if it's on a major orbit. And I will push through pictures, texts, things going on. So up on top of Old Lee's Road, that building is for sale right now. It used to be a theater company, right? The guy contacted me and said, hey, are you looking for a landscape company? And I said, no, but I'm on the CDA. I said, let's push it through. So I push the information through. It goes to retail strategies, retail specialists. And they're made aware of it. We're working on lists of available properties that are in Irondale and trying to make them available to commercial companies to come in. I've been pushing real hard trying to get Boss Power Equipment into Irondale. Boss Power Equipment is doing about six million dollars a year worth of sales on this store in West State. Their clients are sitting over here. Their clients are leaving here, driving to West State to have Womars work on and buy equipment. Why they not buy it here? And the guy told me, he said, we would want you on Grant Mill Road. We're not crazy about being on Highway Seventy-Eight. And so I'm sitting here trying to show him available properties of here. Look, what about this right here on Old Lee's Road? It's almost on Grant Mill Road. It'd be a great piece of property. So, you know, does all those result in somebody actually moving in? You just keep pushing.
Okay. That's a good question. Just one more. You've been on there for a year and I ask you the same question. What are some things that you think needs to be changed while you served for that year? What are some of the things you think could be done a little different from a CDA standpoint while you get on there for a year?
So when you build a house, you get it set up land, and then you start bulldozing the dirt and it's really hard, difficult work. All the swinging the pick, work on the backhoe, and pour the concrete. And at that point, you've done a lot of work, but it looks like a muddy mess. And then once you do that, you start building a structure. You have a bunch of wood, but it still looks like a mess. And then you build on top of that, you put a roof on it and you put bricks on it, and it's starting to look better, but your glorious project doesn't come together until a lot of work's been put in. And I think the year I've been there, we've seen a foundation getting built. You know, is Irondale a better place now than it was a year ago? I think we're getting, we're getting that foundation built. How long did it take, how long did it take for trust to pop? It didn't pop in two or three years. It popped after twenty years of sitting there. I've seen that, I've seen that place just stay steady. And as citizens trusted in it and as they went to a private school district, which is a very big key. But as it sat there steady and people liked their city, then it popped. As we stay steady and hold the course and we're financially responsible, people raise their families here, they get educations, they get degrees, this place is, will pop. But we ain't gonna turn this city around in one year, two years.
So specifically, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, we're putting foundations that I feel like this year was the great foundation building process.
Okay. So specifically, I like, I'm kind of OCD. I kind of speak to the... So specifically, you're saying you would not implement anything different because the foundation has been laid and everything has been going basically the way that you wanted to go, correct?
I think the things that are fixing to be built on the foundation here
Yeah.
is going to be awesome. Like, in other words, we have some things that are fixing, that the foundation's being built right now, that are gonna be awesome. It's gonna be great for our city.
Okay. So you wouldn't change anything right now?
Would I change anything over the past twelve months?
As a new member, yes.
Yeah, the past twelve months has been, has been making good progress.
Okay. Sorry to keep getting answered. Go ahead.
All right. Similar question to Aaron, and I believe Bobby Joe touched on it a little bit. On your time with the CDA, any projects that have unfolded within the past year that you've had a direct impact on and what those impacts might have been?
We are working on things right now that are unfolding that can't be talked about.
I guess I'm saying, would, did you take a lead on a particular project? Have you had particular assignments with follow-up, communication, those types of things? What sort of roles did you maybe play in those? Or were you not really involved in those particular projects?
The key project, we've only been able to have one person involved that has been able to talk directly to the potential people to be there. That's the key project, right? Because it's under non-disclosure agreement.
Understood.
Yeah. So I have not been able to prove it to that.
I know a year's been a long time.
Right, that's right.
Okay. That's all I have for your call. Any follow-up questions before we go? Thank you three times, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time.
All right. And Mark? For your question?
Good evening. I'm O'Wanmark here. Thank you all for your time. My wife and I moved to Irondale in May of twenty-twelve. We lived here for just over eight years with our only son Shepard in twenty-thirteen. And we really enjoyed our time in Irondale. We enjoyed watching the city grow. I think that, you know, from the moment where I began to attend some city council meetings, roughly around twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, especially when what became the boroughs was being discussed and a lot of discussions around the way that it could be zoned and things of that nature. From, you took a snapshot there and you took a snapshot today, and I think we've made a lot of great progress. Excited to see what the new team does in terms of moving the city forward. Professionally, I'm an investment advisor at VCR Wealth Strategies. We work in investment management and financial planning.
What's the name of that team?
VCR Wealth Strategies. It's in Liberty Park. Work in financial planning and investment management for families, for small business owners. Really enjoy my work, very passionate about it, and take that fiduciary liability that we choose to take upon ourselves very seriously. And I think that when you think about the long-term planning work that I do for our clients and that fiduciary mindset that I bring to every decision that I make, I think that I'll apply that to the Commercial Development Authority and would have what's in Irondale's best long-term interest always apart. I think there are plenty of opportunities for you to take advantage of short-term gain. But I think that it should be considered from a big-picture perspective in terms of what's going to be of the best long-term interest for the city moving forward. When I look around, when I drive around the city, I see a lot of existing structures that present potential great opportunities for the city. Also see empty lots that are zone commercial and those also provide outstanding and exciting opportunities as well. So now I'm very excited about this opportunity. I appreciate the consideration and I believe I'd be a really great candidate due to the fact that I'm gonna bring a fresh set of eyes to the committee. And I'd be very eager and have a strong desire to really possibly help.
All right, thank you. Now, John?
You first.
Me first.
Well, Terry, it's hard.
I'm a creature of habit, so I start over from the same place I served last time. So Steve, you have any follow-up questions? I know you've already been a part of the meeting. Bobby Joe?
Yes, yes. I'm consistent. I don't wanna say the same thing I said to Mark over there. I'm sorry, Paul. Your call, yes. Communication, transparency, and integrity. And building relationships.
What would be for a look?
Yeah, I know you're a financial wealth guy, so I'm sure you know all about creating relationships. But I haven't seen you either.
That's fair.
You know, I haven't seen you either.
That's fair.
And I haven't. I've been here fourteen years. And I know, how long have you been on the CDA? I know we appointed you, but how long have you been on the CDA?
Not long, yeah.
He's on the board.
Not long, yeah.
Oh, you're not on the CDA? I thought we had two people here that was on the CDA.
Aaron and Paul. Or currently, well, Aaron was on the CDA, Paul is on the CDA. His seat is up. He's asking for it again. And the reason we're having, we've got two seats available, one of which is being vacated by Senator.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Mark. I felt you were wrong with CDA. I apologize. And I'm a man that admits when I'm wrong. I totally apologize because I didn't get mixed up with, as Paul, as I said. So my apologies.
Okay.
Okay. I'll ask you the same question. Have you ever served on any committee in the City of Irondale?
I was in the City of Irondale. I currently serve on Children's Development Committee for the future.
Okay, all right. What makes you, being a financial wealth guy, understanding your financial background, but what makes you the best candidate to serve on the CDA? What makes you think that you're the best candidate for this position?
Very fresh eyes. I think that's always a benefit. A really strong desire and eagerness to serve. And I always look at things from the long-term perspective, zoom out, see the big picture, think about what's gonna impact Irondale, not only positively today, but also the future down the road.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. I'm not a follower down at the beginning. I was wrong. I was wrong. I feel bad.
Similar question to Bobby Joe. Given the fiduciary nature of your job, how do you think that can complement your role with the CDA?
Yeah, I think that when I'm gonna describe it to someone as simple as possible, I'll distill things in the most simple way. I distill a lot of complex topics when I'm communicating with my clients, all the different variables that go into implementing a financial plan, managing portfolios or diversified. Lost my train of thought. Repeat your question.
Your role as a fiduciary and how it can translate into the CDA?
When you distill a fiduciary into its most simplest, what's in your best long-term interest? And so when you apply that to this particular role, what is in Irondale's best long-term interest? And I think that every decision I make, everything I analyze and generate a recommendation on is always in someone's best long-term interest, whether that's a power E, someone who's in their thirties accumulating their wealth and working for retirement, or a small business owner facing the main challenges that they face.
Do you deal with mostly, do you deal with mostly personal relationships? Or do you also get into the business financial planning as well?
We have a good mix. I have a lot of small business experience and we also have a nice balance of private life management.
Thank you. Terry? John?
How long you been in, you've been in Irondale?
Since May of twenty-twelve, so eight years.
Yeah, I remember you when we were doing that project.
Yeah.
Bobby don't remember you.
He does not.
I remember you.
He also mentioned Paul.
Yeah, we put you in Paul. That looked alike. I'm not saying anything. But I remember you. I remember Paul. They answered my question. They answered my, answered my question. Very sweet. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you very much, your job. Appreciate you. All right, so that, unless anybody else has any special guests that they have here that we need to hear from, I would say we move on.
Well, I just want to congratulate Mr. Box for winning the election of the night. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Congratulations, Box. These are special congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, great luck.
Okay. So our next, our next call will be council deliberation on agenda items. At this time, there are no agenda items. So we need to make a decision before we approve the agenda. If we want to go ahead and take action on any of these CDA nominees? Or do we want to take time to think about what we've heard? Come back and make the appointment in two weeks? Or possibly have a work session? I'm interested in you guys' pleasure as far as how y'all would like to proceed with this agenda. Do y'all want to take action on these nominees? Or do you want to leave the, someone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to put it on the next council agenda rule in a week or two.
Fair enough. Is that agreed?
Do you have a real discussion? Do we need to be in executive session or do we, you know, and then make our decision when we come in here? Because we gotta get two people's names out there.
I think it's good to have.
These three officers are gonna agree on. I'm just trying to figure out.
Knowing that we can't obviously talk about it offline, we would either need to go into executive session or we'd have to hold a work meeting. So once again, y'all's pleasure on how y'all would like to handle that.
Well, work meetings are open, so we can.
Yeah, well, really doing an interview is not designed for a work session. I mean, if you're gonna select the people, you gotta, you have to do that in the public arena and then decide who you're gonna vote for. But that's not something that you go into executive session for. It's the interview.
Not the board. The board personnel.
Knowing that we can't talk about it offline as far as any decisions go, that's really what I'm referring to as far as do y'all like to...
I'd like another week to think about it. I just got the resumes to look at it yesterday. I'd like another week to ponder on it.
Thank you, Terry. Bobby Joe?
Yes, sir. I'm the CDA.
John? That being said, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
There is no agenda.
No? Fair enough. So that being said, any, there's obviously with no agenda, there's... So, that being said, any, uh, there's obviously with no agenda, there's no room for public comments on the agenda. Uh, so, that being said, any public comments to the council about non-agenda items on the... Yes, ma'am.
In Steve's fifty-six thirty-seven Hampton Road, we need a microphone for people that are speaking to the council. Because I couldn't hear a lot of what was being said by these candidates, and I think they all have a lot to offer. So, we missed it.
I don't know if it's a volume issue, or...
Are you talking about...
No, I'm talking about people who come before you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Gotcha. Usually there's a microphone stand, I didn't even realize it wasn't there, and I... Fair enough. Uh, any other comments to the council about non-agenda items?
Anyway, I did seven twenty-nine Belmont Drive. One of the things that I did want to have clarity on, because there was a lot of, uh, things before the meeting and, and during and so on, and that is the issue of transparency and communication. I invite our counselors, since I've been serving on the CDA, there has been transparency, there has been communication. You're welcome to look through all the minutes. You're welcome to look through the financial statements. I also provided you, the city council, with a report of my review of the CDA's finances. I also followed up with providing you with policies and procedures that were implemented by this CDA board. So, there has been a tremendous amount of transparency versus what was going on prior in the last three years. Thank you.
And Cindy, while we have you real quick, remind us how many years you had left in your term?
Two years left. I was appointed in twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
It's a four-year term.
Perfect. Any other, uh, comments about non-agenda items?
I do. I, I got a question, but I got a statement. Um, as far as communication, communication goes both ways. This is what we received from the CDA. I think we got it, what, uh, before our council meeting, last council meeting in September? Somewhere around that time? Or, or council meeting before then? This is the first time I've ever received something like this. This is the first time since I've been serving this, during this administration, okay? So, that's one thing. And let's make it clear. I'm not saying that whatever is going on in the CDA, that they're not being transparent. But the communication, there's a gap somewhere. I've been here fourteen years, on this council fourteen years. In this administration, there's been no dialogue with all of the counselors. I'm talking all of the counselors. Now, we have a liaison to the CDA, but there's been a communication breakdown somewhere. So, when I talk about communication, that's what I'm talking about. When I'm talking about transparency, this is the only thing that I have received. I'm not saying anybody else, but I have received. As far as what is this, financial conflict of interest, travel policies, and procedures? I haven't received any financial statements or anything. That's what I'm talking about transparency. Not saying anything has been done wrong, but I have received it. When I talk about integrity, it takes two. It takes two to have a relationship. It takes two to, when you talk about integrity, you have to put yourself in a sense where people can come and talk to you and they can trust you as far as providing information to you. You know, that's what I'm talking about.
Councilwoman Wilson, I provided the city council with the review of the audit that I did.
Is this it right here?
No, no. The council received it.
Okay.
Received it last year.
Okay.
Letting you know what policies were going to be implemented as a result of the internal control review that took place when I was first appointed to the council. I was asked by the council if I would commit to transparency of the CDA's finances, of the CDA's minutes, and so on, and that has happened. The city clerk receives a copy of the minutes. The liaison receives a copy of the minutes. The mayor receives a copy of the minutes. All of the folks in Irondale that are in positions of authority receive copies of minutes that have been approved by the council. You're welcome to go to the filing cabinet, and you'll have copies of minutes from the, from the month that I was appointed as the secretary treasurer of the CDA. There has never been one month where that has not taken place.
I would have voted race on that.
Like, like I said, I have not received it. I didn't speak to any other counselor up here. I said, I haven't. This is the only thing that I have received. If you sent out a copy of an audit or whatever, between the time you sent out the audit and this...
I want to, I want to shut it down.
I have not received anything.
This is not the time or place right now. There's, there's obviously a...
I can't speak for anybody else.
And, and we can, if there's, if you feel that there's a particular breakdown with the CDA, we can look into that and, uh, and make changes going forward. Um, Steve, you're the liaison of the CDA at this time of week?
Okay.
So, that will be a position that is up for grabs when we, uh, when we roll into the new administration. So, if you'd like that to be you, then you're more than welcome, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm just one councilperson. I don't make the decisions.
Alright, any other? Yes, sir. Uh, actually, John, you had your hand up first.
Um, John Sean, thirty-eight forty-eight Rock Ridge Road. Um, as most of you know, I'm pretty active in exchange level. You may not be aware, but we did move the flag to half-staff and then to full-staff on Sunday, which was Armin's, um, Memorial Day. So, uh, just as an employee, I, also, I've got several points I'd like to mention that involve probably the mayor, who unfortunately wasn't able to be here today. But we still have cars parked in yards, and I'm going to keep harping on that until it freezes over because it's destroying our neighborhoods. As long as you got, we've got ordinance on, on the book, and the mayor will not enforce the, the ordinances, and the city council doesn't push the mayor to do that. If you don't want the, like the mayor said before, we need to get rid of the ordinance if you're not going to enforce it. So, we need, for you to do something in the near future. Because I got two or three neighbors up there on Rock Ridge Road that are parking two and three cars in their front yard. That doesn't look good at all. And they've been, and they got other neighbors that are driving, making driveways through private property. It's illegal also. We got cars parked on grass, and it's illegal by our ordinances, but we're not enforcing them. Secondly, um, is it, uh, the minutes that we have don't reflect any of the comments that people make after, like the public makes to the council right now? Is there any way that this could be involved in the recording of the minutes? Because I, it's, we sound like we're just kind of making a, a bad air and wind because nothing ever happens, and nothing is ever recorded, except for now, finally, it's being recorded on, on the, on the tube here. I would like to see the council refer to people that make comments and comment back to them as if we had said something of importance. I think some of us do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Um, Mr. Box?
Sure. Guys, I, uh, Robert Box, sixty-two sixteen Ransom Road, uh, here in Irondale. I want to say I, uh, number one, appreciate the opportunity to be here, sir. Number two, looking forward to working with all you guys. Um, all you people that came out and, uh, did a wonderful job. I know that, uh, they'll pick the best candidates for us. Earlier in the meeting, we had something that it's good to see passion.